And on Zoom. It's typical protocol for us to break at 5:30 to prepare for the formal meeting. And no later than 5:45 to allow for such preparation. So with that, Madam Clerk, and you're down there, would you please announce those school board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. President Emily Einstein, Board Chairwoman Brey, Vice Chair Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Nanny, and Ms. Riggs.
Ms. Weems? Thank you, and Mrs. Weems is personal, will be Zooming in due to personal travel. Are you with us, Mrs. Weems? Not yet, okay, you'll let us know, okay. All right, so with men matters, I'll begin. There is a, Madam Clerk, you have a sheet for us, yes?
It is with your papers?
Wonderful. So that time of year for adopted schools, so we'll do our traditional round robin. Robin, and I ask that you just sign up for one at a time, and we'll just keep circling around until we're done, and I have a list from Mrs. Weems, so I'll be answering on, filling in on her behalf as well. Let's see, I want to be, draw everybody's attention if you missed Ms. Allen's email yesterday. On, it was a follow-up to remarks from Dr. Robertson from the last workshop on, on the division's SOL results exceeding both the region and state in all categories, reading, writing, math, science, history, I think I got all that. So if you haven't, there's some, some good bar graphs associated with that email, so, so take a look. And so there's certainly much to celebrate and also an acknowledgement of the work still to be done.
Can I add to that?
Please.
So I think this is when we should pause and, and really say, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you to senior staff for all of your hard work leading the division. Thank you, most importantly, to our teachers and our employees. It's been a heck of a two and a half years, and your hard work, it actually, it brought tears to my eyes. I was so thrilled to see the, the, these results. What our teachers and our employees accomplished over these two and a half years showed in these results, and I, as a board member, could not be more pleased. And, and honestly, I, I'm going to stand, even if I'm by myself, but I'm going to stand and applaud.
Thank you, Mrs. Melnick. And my third piece is just a, and I did email you all last night, but so for the benefit of the public as well, a follow-up to the retreat and the topic of a school board, a student's school board member. So we had Mrs. Franklin and Ms. Owens step forth and volunteer for that role at the actual retreat. They, they volunteered on the spot, and so just making it official that they'll be, I'll be in touch, further touch with them both, and come up with a timeline too, but checking with the usual sources that we would, yes.
So, you know, I'm reminded by this conversation several years ago, and the board decided not to move forward with it, and I don't specifically remember the reason why. I remember Mr. Edwards had brought up some concerns on the topic, and I don't remember if it was legal or, um,
I'll take a crack, right. And again, to make it clear, it's for them to come back with a recommendation, so we're not right now committing to it, but they'll come back with that recommendation. Dr. Spence had weighed in at the time to point, at our request, we asked him about the student advisory. What is the official term for the group?
Superintendent Student Advisory Council.
Council, and they have two representatives from each high school. So with it being the size division it is, we all agreed, you know, that is certainly more representative. It's come, I think the reason we felt it prudent to at least take a closer look is we, we don't throw out the baby with bathwater, keep what's in place. Let's see if there is a need or purpose for a specific student's school board members, such as what other districts have.
So, I could be wrong, but they don't vote, right?
Correct.
So they just give input, but,
But I mean, we're not here to debate the merits of it.
I get it, but I, I think other divisions though, that have this particular thing, don't have a superintendent's advisory committee like we do. And I think that in itself shows, you don't think that's true?
Yeah.
Okay, you think they also have?
I think they serve different roles.
Okay, well, all right, well, getting input from students, I think, is important. So again, if we're just looking into this for informational purposes, I don't see anything wrong with that right now, and seeing where we go, and let's see what they, what they come up with.
That was where we landed at the retreat to follow up with more information, and I just didn't mean for, you know, a month to pass before making it official. So that's what I had, folks, anybody else? And maybe I'll just mention the new teacher orientation and acknowledge our colleagues who were present with me, Ms. Owens, Mrs. Franklin, Mrs. Riggs, and just appreciate the invitation from staff for those who were available. And just certainly, we were there for the opening session, and I offered some remarks on behalf of all of you. They were short and sweet, and they're, they're going at it all this week, right, our new, our new teachers?
That's right, with all staff back on Friday for flex day.
All right then, so we, looks like we're ready to start with our first presenter of the evening, Dr. Rogers, Chief Academic Officer, a follow-up on instructional materials notification process.
Good evening, Chairwoman Brey, Vice Chair Melnick, School Board Members, and Dr. Spence. This afternoon, I will share with you our process for partnering with parents to notify them of instructional materials that the children are using relative to Senate Bill 656. During the workshop, I will remind the board of information that was shared during your board meetings in October of 2021 and May of 2022 regarding what we consider to be instructional materials. I'll then provide an overview of Senate Bill 656 and how we'll partner with parents to ensure that our practices are in alignment with Senate Bill 656 ahead of the expectation of adoption of a policy by January 1st of 2023. Relately, I recognize that there have been concerns relative to the instructional materials appeals process for families and citizens, and that discussion will take place during the information portion of your formal meeting. So let's begin with a reminder of what are considered instructional materials. The slide in front of you should be familiar, as we've used it several, in several presentations throughout the last couple of years. And as a reminder, instructional materials are those materials that are used by a teacher in order to simplify their teaching. They include both visual and audiovisual aids and can either be printed or digital resources. It's important to note that library materials are considered instructional materials when they are used for completion of an assignment or as part of an academic or extracurricular educational program. The slide in front of you does provide examples of instructional materials where we employ vetted processes in order to obtain them, and that has been shared with you previously as well. And relatedly, for purposes of Senate Bill 656, instructional materials are defined as any content used by one or more students for an educational purpose regardless of its format, whether it's printed, representational, audiovisual, electronic, or even digital, such as materials and software applications that are accessible through the internet or the time and place and manner in which that content is used. And I'd like to focus your attention on Senate Bill 656. The purpose of Senate Bill 656 is to ensure parent partnerships in determining the instructional material that's used for students that may contain sexually explicit content. The bill focuses on three things, the first of which is notifying parents of material that includes sexually explicit content. The second is school divisions identifying instructional materials that include sexually explicit content. And then the third is partnering with our parents to be able to review instructional materials that include sexually explicit content and offering them an alternative if they request it. Teams in the Department of Teaching and Learning have been working this summer on parent notification forms, identifying resources in our curriculum that contain sexually explicit content, and also developing processes to partner with our partners to be able to review instructional material prior to a student having access to those resources. I'd like to thank the team, most of whom are here from the Department of Teaching and Learning, our Library and Media Services staff, specialist staff, and teachers who are working over the summer on meeting the expectation. With the purpose of Senate Bill 656 is to ensure parent partnerships in determining instructional material use for students that may contain sexually explicit content, it's also important to note that the language in the bill clearly states the bill is not to be construed as requiring or providing for the censoring of books in our schools. Now you might ask, exactly does sexually explicit content mean? Well, some of the questions that have come up since Senate Bill 656 is what, what does that mean? The definition of sexually explicit for the purpose of Senate Bill 656 comes from Section 2-2-2827 of the Virginia Code and pertains to restrictions on accessing sexually explicit content via the agency-owned or leased computer equipment. Section 18.2-390 is also used to further define nudity and sexual excitement, sexual conduct, or sadomasochistic abuse. For the purposes of this presentation, I do want to read the definition that the Senate Bill has in it. Sexually explicit content means any description of or any picture, photograph, drawing, motion picture film, digital image, or similar visual representation depicting sexual bestiality, allude exhibition of nudity, as nudity is defined in Section 18.2-390, sexual excitement, sexual conduct, or sadomasochistic abuse as defined in Section 18.2-390, corporophilia, urophilia, or fetishism. It's also important to note that the definition for sexually explicit content as defined in Senate Bill 656 is different from the definition of pornography. The most significant difference is intact. Pornography is defined as printed or visual material containing the explicit description or display of sexual organs, activity, intended to cause sexual excitement and stimulate erotic rather than aesthetic or emotional feelings. As such, I would like to reiterate, as has been shared in other presentations to the board, that we do not have pornography in our schools. Now I'll share our planned parent partnerships in our classrooms to begin to be in alignment with Senate Bill 656. Here is how we're specifically addressing Senate Bill 656 in the classroom. Please note that the process is being designed for any instructional material that contains sexually explicit content and is more than just for novels and texts that are read in English. So for teacher actions, we plan to share with parents at least 14 days in advance that their student will be reading a novel or text that includes some form of sexually explicit language and/or description. This notification will be in an email to parents with a Google form to complete, or a hard copy will be sent home with the student if needed. And because we are offering some of our courses this year on a four-by-four schedule, 14 days notice is reasonable based on the curriculum pacing for those courses. Our parents or guardians must complete a parent guardian form for instructional materials and submit that form to the student's teacher prior to the start of the reading that's distributed to the students. And then upon receipt of the completed form, the teacher will provide an alternative text to that student. So I want to show you what the form looks like. This is the form that our secondary teachers will use to notify our parents that there will be a resource used that contains sexually explicit content. The form does require parents to communicate their preference to have their child read an alternative text. Students whose parents do not return the form will proceed with the teacher's identified resource. Students whose parents return the form will be assigned an alternative text from the teacher. And again, this will be shared with parents through email as a Google form, and a paper copy will send home, be sent home with students if they need it. So you may ask, well, what are some of the example texts that are identified as having sexually explicit content? So here's some, some examples of texts that meet the definition of books that have, contain sexually explicit content as defined by Senate Bill 656. There's Hamlet, One Fool Over the Cuckoo's Nest, The Blue-Eyed Diary of Anne Frank, 1984, and Their Eyes Are Watching God, and these are just a few. In partnership with our coaches and teachers, instructional coaches will, excuse me, instructional coordinators will continue to vet the list to identify those resources with sexually explicit content. And the Department of Teaching and Learning, Library and Media Specialists, and Teachers will continue to work through our titles to identify instructional materials that have sexually explicit content. Lists of those materials with sexually explicit content will be made available for parents to view. And again, please note that the list may have, may inadvertently contain some titles that were missed inadvertently, and a resource that a parent or legal guardian or adult student may seem, may deem that resource as sexually explicit. And in those instances, what we'll do is follow our school board policy and the regulations that are associated with those should a challenge be made. And again, you are slated to discuss those book challenges during the formal meeting. Now how we're partnering with parents in the library. Relative to parent partnerships in the library, I think it's important to note that parents have always had the ability to request limits on their students having access to certain materials that are in the library. What's new for us this year as a result of Senate Bill 656 is the man, 656 is the manner in which limits can be placed on student choice selection, as well as parent parental review of library materials prior to they are being used for instructional purposes. The process created does consist of two forms for parents to use. The process has been communicated with our Library and Media Specialists as well as with our school principals this month. If a parent wishes to restrict student choice for library books, they can submit a form to restrict book titles, specific authors, or even a series of books. And if a parent wishes to review library materials prior to their being used for instructional purposes, students will not be allowed to check out those materials to be used for instructional purposes without the express permission of their parent. And I'll provide more detail in terms of what that looks like in the next slide. Again, while it's always been an option for our parents to limit access to library materials, we formalized that process for parents with the form that includes a link to the list of previously challenged books for their own personal information. And that link will be updated as new materials are challenged. This form will become part of the student's cumulative record, and the information on it will be added to Destiny, which is our library management system. Parents can update their list or even remove restrictions at any point in time. That's the first form. The second form is created to honor the language that's in Senate Bill 656, and that is to support parent notification on a library book that may become instructional material. So the second form allows our LMSs to partner with parents who want, who want input on library materials that may be checked out for instructional purposes. So for example, if a teacher brings his or her class to the library to check out a book for instructional, for an instructional assignment, that choice book then becomes an instructional material. And in an effort to partner with our parents, we've created this form that provides parents with the opportunity to be made aware of any book that their student wants to check out for an instructional assignment before they are allowed to check it out. The LMS will then notify the student that their parent will receive an email with the name of the book as well as the assignment prior to permission. And once that parent emails back the confirmation or the request for an alternative text, the original book or alternative parent request will be checked out to the student. So what are our next steps? As we prepare to begin a new school year, it's important that these updates are provided to our administrators, teachers, and all building-based staff who work with students in literacy. We shared these updates with our principals during their August meetings, league meetings, library media specialists, as well as during our back-to-school meetings with our coaches and department chairpersons, and that will continue to be a topic of discussion during monthly collaboration with our teachers. We are planning to ensure that we clearly communicate this process with our families by having information available on our websites, as well as having teachers to communicate that information relative to the process with families. Professional learning on this topic is absolutely ongoing and will take place all throughout the course of the school year. And just as a reminder, the timeline of our compliance to this Senate Bill is to have a policy in place by January 1st of 2023. And we've certainly already begun that process of preparing for that, as you can see from this presentation. At this time, I do have probably every member of our department that is associated with literacy here to assist me in answering any questions that you may have relative to this process.
Mrs. Maney?
Thank you, Dr. Rogers.
Thank you. So in the law, it's specific, it doesn't just say parental notification, it says ensuring parental notification. And I remember years ago, when we were redoing the Family Life Education curriculum and Dr. Cashwell was here, we talked about this, and I had commented at that time that there were times as a parent, I never got that notification of the, of the family life education. So how are we going to ensure parental notification as stated in the law?
So, the Senate Bill 656 does indicate that we have to have notification. That's part of the professional learning process, and we started with our own teams and making sure that we understand what the law says. And in turn, we've communicated with our building of principals, and in turn, we're communicating with our coaches, and we will continue to offer professional development for not only our English teachers, because we have science and social studies teachers who could potentially be in a similar situation. So it's important that all teachers are aware of what the law is and that we have clear processes and understanding how we have to use the forms in order to get parental input on those, on those permissions that are needed for the resources. So that's a little different from what we've done in the past, and it's a matter of education and professional development.
So are you going to have a verification process to ensure the parents are notified?
So what we're doing right now is identifying the texts within the curriculum of those books that teachers are using, and as a shared, a couple of weeks probably, we said at least 14 days, and we would notify any parent that these are the texts that are going to be used, and they have to indicate whether they, if they send it back, then that lets us know that they want to review the material before having alternatives, so yes.
But what if they never receive it? I mean, how, how is the notification getting to the parent? How do we know the notification is getting to the parent?
So the, the teacher will be responsible for sending notification to parents. So that's the expectation that we rely upon our teachers to make sure that if they have their teaching, what's that? Book that they're teaching in the first month of school, potentially. What's that?
A vice of men.
So the teachers will communicate with their families, very much like what they do with, I think, we can use our learning management system to make sure that we communicate with all of our families that we're going to be covering this text that could potentially contain a sexually explicit resource.
Dr. Rogers, the guidance provided by VDOE, which again isn't final, but specifically under the notice explains what it, and there's such notice shall be provided in writing to parents by US mail, email, and/or in person or at parent-teacher meeting. That's what the, their recommended guidance is right now. And again, that could change, but that's what they're considering sufficient under the VDOE guidelines. Okay, thank you.
Did you want to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to add something.
Yeah.
So, as Dr. Rogers shared, there's two forms that we're focusing on for communicating to ensure that. One is an email with a Google form so that the parent can get the email, but also sending a hard copy, because not everybody has a parent or not everybody checks the email. So we wanted to make sure, to your point, that they are getting that information, so they'll get an email with a Google form, as well as, hey, this came home as a hard copy, and to check with your students. So trying to make sure we're hitting both of those to what Ms. Lynetti just shared about how we're making sure. So we're trying to the email, but also a hard copy to go home.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then just one other question on your forms that you have here, parent partnerships in the library for parents to be able to limit access to certain materials. So the problem that I see is that parents don't know what's in the library. I, as a parent, had no idea that the Saga series, that I do believe was pornographic, was in our schools, fortunately, it's not there anymore. But I, as a parent, would have never known that I needed to complete a form for something that I didn't know was there. So could a parent fill out this form and say that I don't want my child to have access in, to any library books that meet the requirements of, meet the definition of sexually explicit in SB 656? Could they just simply put that on the form? That way, it kind of covers anything that they believe is sexually explicit?
So we've got a conversation about if you want to answer?
Please, if I may. So the library materials are only instructional when they're being checked out for an instructional assignment, and 656 focuses on instructional,
Right, I understand that, but this form here, that, is this only for instructional materials in the library?
No, that's, that is, that is a response to the conversation we had the last time I was in front of you, where you shared you didn't know that there was a way to do that, and we wanted to formalize that process. So this form is in response to that. So if I just generically want to say, or generally want to say, I don't want my child to read the Twilight series, I don't think that's good material, and I just don't want my children to have access to that, that's what they would put on there, because that's choice reading. So that form is for choice reading. The other form is prior notification for a parent if the material is being checked out for instruction. We included the URL to the challenged books so that a parent who was wondering what's already been challenged, if they wanted to reference that, they could reference that, and that will, as challenges come in, be updated. So that link will be live for parents to be able to see what's been challenged.
Okay, but they wouldn't be able to necessarily just say, I don't want my child to check out sexually explicit books in the library for choice reading?
Well, but choice reading doesn't fall under 656.
No, I'm, and I'm just, could they in this form that you're offering?
What is a choice reading that might be offensive to you or that might be your tolerance level would be different from a different parent's tolerance level? So for a parent to say that they might be offended by kissing, and then that would limit, you know, especially in a secondary school, most of the books. So what's your tolerance level for sexually explicit at that point?
Well, that's why I said, like, if a parent said, based upon the definition given in SB 656, I don't want my child to check out any of those types of books from the library as choice reading. If they put that on that form, would that be accepted?
We have preferred a title, an author, a John, a, a book series, because by putting that, you're giving, you're asking the Library and Media Specialist to be a judge of your preference, and I don't want the library, here, we're talking about partnerships and parents being a part of that. If you say that, then you're asking the Library and Media Specialist to be the determiner of what is sexually explicit for a choice read. So do you understand what I'm saying? I want a partnership.
But we're determining that for curriculum, so I'm not sure why we,
We have a bunch of people that are doing that.
Okay.
We have a team of people, so it's not one person working in isolation. We're considering lots of resources, and because they are on curriculum, it's a little easier because you have a, a group of people that are able to vet that, whereas, you know, with just the choice for you to check it out.
Mrs. Hughes?
So as far as checking out books in the library, that's done electronically, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so could you not have whatever they check out to be available that parents can look up in the portal? Or the parent gets a ping when their child checks a book out, and if the parent's not happy, they tell their child, take it back. And that way, it's completely, if I get a ping that my child checked out such-and-such book, I can just look it up and see what I think about it, and I'm either good with it or I'm not. Nobody else has to make a judgment call. All the stuff's electronic anyway, so we should have the software to do that. Nobody else is having to make judgment calls for my child, and my decisions aren't affecting anyone else's child.
Sure, because we've had lots of conversations about that. Sure. Cause we've had lots of conversations about that, and I'm gonna let, um, Dr. Sheppard answer that question because she did a lot of research on, on what the, um, possibilities are relative to what you just asked.
So talk to other divisions around the state. What were they doing about, um, an email notification when books get checked out? Um, currently in Destiny, so like you might know if you've had children, at the end of the school year, if your child still has a book out, the library media specialist is able to send a message to all parents that says your child still has a book checked out. In Virginia Beach, we're so fortunate that our synergy data.
Oh, gosh.
It's on. Sorry, sorry.
It's so weird. I don't even know what that is.
I can't even dance to music. I mean, it's just, you know.
It's not even a ringtone. It's on silent. I have no idea what that was. Sorry.
Okay, um, we're so fortunate that our, our student information system merges with Destiny, so all parent emails and information are in our Destiny system. If we, um, turn that on, the library media specialist have to create a report every day for that to run. That would be sixty-five thousand email messages that would go out potentially if students all checked out books. Um, in looking at the systems we already run in our school division, we would have had to stagger. What happens is now you've got a parent getting a notification at three o'clock in the morning that their child checked out a book at two o'clock in the afternoon. And so the child has had that book for that, um, period of time. So having that email notification after the fact is gonna weigh down our system. And with all of the other systems that we run overnight, um, that email-generated message would not get to the parent in a timely manner. If a parent fills out the form and says for instructional purposes, I would like to know ahead of time, we can, we won't even check out the book until the parent gives permission. So the child doesn't have a book the parent wouldn't approve of for instruction.
But as Ms. Manning pointed out, parents don't know all the books that are in the library, so they would have a hard time doing it preemptively. Bedford County has a thing where the parent gets a notification when their child checks a book out.
So here's the difference between Bedford County and here. In Bedford County, there's, the student information system is not connected to Destiny. So they have to manually load, um, all of the parent email addresses. If twelve of you at the table say, I don't wanna get these email messages, Bedford County just has to delete them, and they don't get any more messages. And only the one person who wants the messages gets them. In Virginia Beach, we can't delete it. So either it's on or it's not. And so pa- I mean, it's on or, or we don't do the email messages because parents, we can't turn it off. Because if I delete Ms. Franklin today, when the synergy system rolls over overnight, Ms. Franklin's gonna be back in the system tomorrow, and she's gonna get the email tomorrow. Our alternative was really in honoring what the bill was requesting is prior notification. Is if you, there's been the flag on the student's, um, Destiny, they can't check it out until there's a conversation. So that is really more in alignment with prior notice versus notification after the fact and not giving sixty-five thousand parents an email message that they might not need or care about. The other concern we had in talking about it is, we put out some important messages from Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and I didn't want parents to be overwhelmed by all of these email messages about a book their child has checked out, that then they, they start ignoring and put it in their spam folder, and then none of the messages from Virginia Beach get to the families. So if we could have a way to delete people out, and only those that wanted it could be in, um, like Bedford County, but because Bedford County manually loads, they have an easier way to delete people, um, who no longer wanna receive those messages.
But is there no way to link it up where parents can go into the parent portal and see what books their children have checked out? That way, you wouldn't even need to send a notification. I mean, if I'm a parent who's concerned about that, I'm gonna check it. If I'm not, I won't.
I can look into that. I don't think, I think that, um, I don't think currently parents have access to get into Destiny, correct? That way, in that way, to be able to see what their child has checked out. But I can look into that and I can get back to you on that.
Kinda run a report after the fact though, right? Yeah.
But if my child checks out a book at noon, and I go in there and check it at six o'clock that night? I mean, they've been in school all day anyway. That's the soonest I'm gonna get to it. Or maybe I check it on my lunch period because I'm just really wanting to check it all the time. And that would be on me to do.
Again, I'm not sure if parents can get into that portion, so I will look into that and I'll get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Owens.
And my question was almost similar to, uh, Ms. Hughes. Uh, as a, as a parent, do I, do students have the ability to look in Destiny and see what they have out, what they have checked out?
Students?
Students.
Students can look in Destiny and see what they have checked out.
That was my understanding. And so as a con- concerned parent, if I'm concerned, I assume I have the ability to sit down with my child and say, all right, babe, open up your, your Chromebook and Destiny. We're gonna look together and see what we've been doing in school and what you've been checking out, and then we don't have to create a new system. Other parents don't have to get fifty-eight million new emails. My kid checks out like five library books a week at minimum. All those pings, I could just sit down with my child, ask them to open their Chromebook, and show me what you've been learning, show me what you've been reading, and be able to see it.
Right.
Maybe we can talk to parents about having the option of sitting down with their child and.
Yeah.
Going over things with their child. And that could save us from having to do some of the man-hours of these emails and.
Right.
Just as an option.
Anybody else?
No.
We're good then?
Yeah, I think so.
All right. Okay, thank you both. So that brings us to our health safety update, uh, Agenda Item one C. And we'll begin by welcoming Mr. Freeman, who's chief of, and let me see if I get this right now, School Division Services? Our renamed department, still operational. It was op-
Still School Division Services.
Oh, it was the, the Safe Schools to.
Security and Emergency Management.
Thank you.
All right, uh, good afternoon. Chairman Rogers, Chairman Melman, members of the board, and Dr. Spence. Uh, the purpose of this brief is to provide health safety information for this school year, including recent information on COVID nineteen, the flu, and monkeypox. As has been our practice, our preparations continue to be informed by state law, guidance from the CDC, Virginia Department of Health, VDOE, and our continued strong partnership with the Virginia Beach Department of Health. We continue to meet regularly with a goal of maintaining the highest levels of health safety. Dr. Verdotti is with us tonight, and we'll start by sharing current information. When she is done, she will then take your questions, and I will then finish the brief with layers of prevention that we're implementing to start this school year.
This is our first time here. Well, welcome, doctor. We welcome you with your first, uh, in-person visit.
It is so lovely to be here with you all tonight. So thank you so much. Um, is it, do I need to stand in front of the mic? I, I need to be here. I'll be here. I like to be out with you, but this is good. We can be here. Um, so thank you all for having me. You know, I, I think it's such a great opportunity for me to give an update on some of the things that are going on in public health, um, to help ensure that our kids come back to school as healthy as possible. So as Jack mentioned, we're gonna cover three main topics really, um, COVID, monkeypox, and influenza. Um, so many different things to consider, um, but the bottom line, really, when you think about each of these, is that we really wanna encourage people to stay informed, stay up to date, talk with public health and with your healthcare professionals when you have questions. Um, and that will help us keep you as healthy and, and happy as possible as we move through the winter season. So what you're looking at here is something I'm sure you've seen about a million times. Um, it's the EpiCur for COVID nineteen virus activity. So this is a helpful thing for us in public health as epidemiologists because it helps us look at overall activity. Now, we've talked many times, as we've seen activity increase and decrease over the past several years. And what you're actually seeing here over the past several weeks is a little bit of a decrease in COVID nineteen activity. I can tell you that epidemiologically and from a public health perspective, increasingly, what we expect is that COVID is gonna take on a endemic or seasonal respiratory virus pattern. So if you think about wintertime and all the times we come back together and people are in close contact with each other, um, and we have those opportunities to spread viruses, increasingly, that's what we expect COVID is gonna look like. Now, the good news is what we know and what is very different from two years ago, um, is that we've got good medications and really great vaccines. It is very clear that these vaccines are working phenomenally to help keep people out of the hospital and keep people from dying. So we continue to make those vaccines widely available, um, both at the Health Department, through healthcare per- or healthcare providers throughout the city, uh, pharmacies all over. So not too late to make sure they are up to date, um, including our youngest kids who are able to do that now. So everybody six months and older, so plenty of options. And we expect sometime in September to start hearing a little bit more about what I'm sure you've heard about, um, sort of a, a bi-valent or updated COVID vaccine. So there's some steps that that has to go through, just like all the other vaccines had to go through before it would be available. But it's something that we'll be working closely with the state on and make available as we have that. So again, you know, the big takeaway here is wanting to encourage people to stay informed, take a look at virus activity for what's going on for us in Virginia Beach. Um, this is an overly simplistic one, but I'm gonna say it a bunch of times. Stay home when you're sick, um, and practice good hand washing. Those really are gonna help keep you healthy from all kinds of things. Um, so that's what we've got going on for COVID. I'm gonna switch to something that I'm sure you all have been hearing a lot about, um, which is not a new virus, but in a newly emerging virus. So this is a virus that we've been calling monkeypox, um, but really it's an orthopox virus. And it's in a family that actually has some other important viruses, including smallpox in it. And I wanna note, um, even though pox is in the name, um, chickenpox is not part of this family. Um, so not gonna get cross reactivity in terms of immunity and that sort of thing. Um, but of course, there are other significant viruses, as I mentioned, smallpox in this family. So monkeypox is a virus that belongs to this family that emerged decades ago, um, actually around West Africa. And initially, when it presented, it really looked a little bit like smallpox, so a rash across the face and, and body and hands. Now, what we've seen and what I'm sure you all have heard about quite a bit over the past several months is sort of a, a new emergence of this virus really globally at this point, and it's looking a little bit different clinically. So what we're seeing is a rash that can be all over the body, some fever and some swollen lymph nodes. And this virus, like so many others, right, is transmitted when we have close contact or between person to person. So primarily, it's that close person-to-person, skin-to-skin contact. And again, I mentioned, I don't wanna confuse anybody, I mentioned chickenpox is not part of this virus. But for those of us who, who had chickenpox, right, growing up and remember that rash and that exposure, you can think about the exposure the same way, right? So being in close contact with that rash. So again, having that close contact can result in the fever, um, some chills, some headaches, some swollen lymph nodes. Um, usually, these symptoms are gonna happen around six to thirteen days after you've been exposed. So what do we do to prevent this, right? So again, um, in general, some of the basics which, which really do hold true are gonna be staying home when you're sick and practicing frequent hand washing. In addition to that, right, we wanna make sure that we avoid close contact with people who are confirmed cases, which is one of the ways that public health offers support. And of course, that happens through things like epidemiologic surveillance. So the same public health case investigation and contact tracing tools that we used for COVID, we use for Croesus, we use for all kinds of things. And it's the same kind of follow-up we use for this virus as well. Again, we wanna make sure that people are informed, that they know what's going on, that they're reaching out to and staying in touch with public health and your healthcare providers to get the latest information. And the good news is that when it comes to this virus, we do have an additional preventive tool, and that is vaccine. So there's actually two vaccines that can be used to help protect against monkeypox. The one that's been in use so far and that you've probably heard about the most is called the Jineos vaccine, which was FDA-approved back in two thousand and nineteen. So that vaccine we're offering to people who are at higher risk. And so those are people who have been in close contact with somebody who's had, who is a case, who has an infection, um, or who may have had an exposure, right? So I wanna emphasize, right now, the overall risk to the general public from monkeypox is low. But there are some people who are at higher risk, and those are the people, again, who are in those groups where they may have had close contact with a case, where we wanna reach out to them and offer them vaccine. Because in this situation, if we offer vaccine early enough, that can actually reduce the likelihood that somebody is gonna go on and get sick. So it's a great preventive tool, like so many of our vaccines are, that we're really focusing on this high-risk population. So I wanted to talk a little bit specifically about what's going on, um, in Virginia, and of course, you know, more specifically in Virginia Beach. So, um, as I mentioned, this reemergence of monkeypox that we've seen, there've been over fifteen thousand cases in the United States, about two hundred and seventy-eight in the state of Virginia, and thirteen in Virginia Beach. So what we're doing is, as I mentioned, using those same classic public health tools of case investigation and contact tracing to talk to our cases, find out what they've been doing, with, you know, who they've been around, identify people who would be at higher risk, and reach out to those people. And we do that to offer them vaccine and also to keep checking in on them, to make sure that they don't become sick. Because if they do, we wanna help them with getting tested or medication or anything else that they might need. So I can tell you, we've provided here in Virginia Beach about two hundred to three hundred doses of vaccine per week, um, over the past couple of weeks, um, which is right around where we are now. Um, but we've got plans to start to explain this in the coming weeks. And again, I'm sure you're all seeing a lot of the information coming out about trying to make that available more widely. Um, it's something we're working very closely with VDH on, um, to increase that availability here and make sure that we've got that support offer for people who need it here. We are continuing to really target people who are at higher risk. So again, people who have had close contact with a case, um, or may have close contact with a case. Um, and of course, educational outreach, um, you know, and support that we're providing through phone calls, through, um, visits to our webpage information, both for us and for Virginia, you know, VDH overall, um, helping people know how to access those resources so that they can understand what's going on with something that's new and unusual. So I think that's the big picture we've got on monkeypox. I wanted to take just a quick moment, um, as if there were not enough things to think about. Um, I wanted to also take a quick moment to acknowledge flu. So, um, you know, as we think about the fall season and the winter season, and again, coming back together and being in close contact, influenza is, of course, another virus that can move between us that we wanna keep a close eye on. Um, and again, the good news here is we do have a great preventive tool, a good vaccine for the flu. Um, and you will start to see that flu vaccine being offered both at the Health Department, as well as through your pharmacies and healthcare providers. So we absolutely would encourage everybody to take advantage of that flu shot. The ideal time for this tends to be by October, so you wanna have some immunity, which takes a couple of weeks as we move into the winter season. Um, and again, just really encouraging everybody, I know it sounds so simple, but those two steps of staying home when you're sick and practicing frequent hand washing can go a long way in stopping the spread of different illnesses, including flu. So, um, I wanted to provide just a couple of links, of course, to our website, um, here in Virginia Beach, as well as overall VDH and CDC resources. Um, but those are the quick updates I wanted to make sure you all heard on what's going on in public health.
Well, thank you.
Speaker, tell for any questions for Dr. Verdotti.
Jessica, go ahead, Ms. Owens.
Thank you for the, um, update. I just have, I guess, kind of one. With, uh, monkeypox, uh, could you tell us what we know about any, I guess, long-term impacts, uh, you know, with COVID, we saw the fatality rate. Is this something that is gonna be more like chickenpox level? I, I don't wanna confuse it with chickenpox, but.
Yeah. No, I'm so glad you asked that. So there have not been any deaths reported in, in Virginia. Um, there's a couple of different strains or clades of monkeypox, one and two. Um, and this is actually the, the less, um, virulent or, or, um, you know, less, uh, serious strain that's circulating right now. But it's definitely the kind of thing that we wanna make sure people understand the latest information. And again, while it's not a new virus, it's a newly emerged virus, right, which means that we're gonna learn more as we move along. And as we do that, we wanna make sure people have all of the up-to-date information, which is exactly why we wanna make sure people are staying up to date by reaching out to the public health and healthcare.
Okay. And I wanna make sure I understand this one correct, that, um, you can get vaccinated after an exposure, and it's still going to be a helpful thing where maybe it wouldn't be for some other viruses?
Yeah, so that's right. And it's an interesting point. So this is a technique that we use actually for a couple of different illnesses. Um, another example is actually hepatitis A. So there's a few circumstances in which if you can get somebody vaccinated within a certain window of time, we're talking usually about two weeks, it can actually help your immune system fight off something that you might be incubating. Um, and so again, when we talk about vaccine, when we talk about public health, we always wanna be on the preventive side. So ideally, before anything goes wrong, but there are actually a few circumstances where you can offer that tool even after an exposure and still have protection, and this is one of them.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for the good doctor before Mr. Freeman come ba- comes back on board? Any other questions for the good doctor before Mr. Freeman come ba, comes back on board? All right, and again, and, and even though it's, you've been in the position now, just remind us all at, at the city level for how, how long at this point?
You know, I kept calling myself new and then I realized I've been here with you since December. So, I don't think I can say that anymore. But it is very lovely to be here with you all tonight, so thank you.
And, and thank you for what looks like will be a, a good, a continuation of a, a partnership that we took great pride in with your predecessor. So, thank you.
Absolutely. You know, as a pediatrician, as a public health professional, I cannot say enough how much I value our relationship with Jack and Heidi and, and the whole team. So, thank you all.
All right, thank you, Dr. Pradati. All right, with that as background, it's important to understand that contact tracing for COVID continues to focus on clusters of cases rather than individual cases. As you remember, that's how we finished last year. Let's look at how cases will be handled first. For those who test positive for COVID-19, they must isolate at home for five days and may return on day six if fever-free and their symptoms are improved. They should wear a mask on day six through ten to help prevent, uh, spreading COVID-19. When I mention masks, notice the words that go with it. In this case, the language is, "should wear a mask on day six through ten." Those who have been exposed to someone with COVID-19 are no longer required to quarantine and may attend school or work as long as they remain asymptomatic. Testing is recommended as soon as twenty-four hours after the exposure and again, between, between days three and five, and test kits will be offered. Individuals exposed to COVID-19 should consider wearing a face covering for ten days. Students who are ill at school during school hours will be evaluated by the school nurse. Students with symptoms of COVID-19 and/or fever will be sent home for at least twenty-four hours and they must wear a mask while in the school and waiting to be picked up. Test kits will be offered to parents and staff who are ill or have been exposed to COVID-19. If the test is negative and symptoms persist, families will need to consult with their primary care physician. So, cases will be handled, and here is the consolidated list of our layers of prevention. Families and staff should continue to self-screen and stay at home when sick, just like Dr. Pradati suggested. Vaccinations continue to be a key layer of protection and prevention of the spread of the disease. We will continue to maximize ventilation through HVAC maintenance. We have portable heat filters in all classrooms and we will open windows when conditions permit. We will continue to focus on respiratory etiquette and hand hygiene. Cleaning and disinfecting practices will continue in line with procedures from last year. All schools will have an isolation room for ill students experiencing respiratory or COVID-like symptoms. I shared some specifics related to masking on the previous slide and here's how that fits in as a layer of prevention. Face coverings are optional. KN-95 masks will continue to be provided for student, students when requested by a parent or guardian. Staff may also request KN-95 masks and will need to fill out the voluntary respirator use form. Face coverings are recommended when the community level is medium or high on days six through ten following a positive test or for ten days following a known exposure. The one exception is the example I shared earlier. When a student is sent to the clinic and is ill with respiratory or COVID-like symptoms, in that case, they must wear a mask. COVID notifications will be set to specific groups when clusters are identified, like in a classroom. And there will no longer be a COVID dashboard this year. Those are our COVID layers of prevention. Now, let's talk monkeypox prevention. As Dr. Pradati shared earlier, education and awareness are important so that everyone understands their relative risk and how to minimize that risk. We will closely coordinate with Virginia Beach Department of Public Health if cases arise to determine the specific steps that must be taken. We know that those steps will include cleaning and disinfecting as well as notifications to groups who may have been exposed. We are prepared for monkeypox. We have a strong partnership with the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health and we have leveraged all that we have learned responding to other health safety situations like COVID-19. Further, we are well-positioned to begin the school year and we look forward to getting all of our students and staff back into the learning environment. And with that, we will now take your questions.
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Owens.
Okay. I have, uh, two. Uh, there were some recommendations in regards to, um, COVID as far as isolation. Are there any, um, period of time where you have active, I don't know, lesions or symptoms of monkeypox where it would be recommended that you not be present in school? And when are you good to come back?
Yeah. Excellent question. So, isolation is always the timeframe where we ask you to stay home when you're sick? Isolation is that word where we're always talking about the timeframe. We want you to stay home when you're sick. And isolation periods exist, to your point, for all kinds of different illnesses. Um, the isolation period for monkeypox, and I, I keep doing this, so I apologize, it's similar to chickenpox. Your lesions have to crust over, um, and that's what we're looking for. So, again, for those of you who kind of remember that experience, it's similar and it happens for different people at different times. Um, and it's something that, you know, we would be working to make sure that if there was an individual, you know, they had that guidance, um, for when to return.
Great. Thank you, that's, that's helpful to know. And then, my other question, uh, was in regards to the, uh, optional face coverings, that they're recommended when the community level is medium or high. Will there be, uh, communication, I guess, with the families or with schools that say, hey, we're in medium, they're recommended, they're still optional? Hey, we're in high, recommended, still optional? Hey, we're in low, so we're not recommending them? So that parents and families can make that decision?
So, we regularly communicate with our families, uh, um, uh, on updates. And whenever we send out those updates to our family, they include things that might be important and relevant to them. So, if we get to an area where we're in the medium and high, uh, I think it's reasonable that we would share that information so that people can make the, their personal choice.
Great. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, we thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that concludes our workshop, ending a little early today. And we will reconvene in chambers at six o'clock for the formal meeting.
Can we do it closed? Can we do it?
Whereas the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and where a section two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-two-D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Motion to approve. Mrs. Manning, a second. Mrs. Anderson, all in favor, show a raised hand, please.
Men of chair, we have ten ayes, the motion to pass.
Okay, we are now adjourned and will reconvene in chambers, six o'clock for formal meeting. Thank you all.